Aloha, kako. Eke alīka makuulani ki iki e loaoko ke aoholoko. E ihoꞌi makō kaupo e ohana, o ke ke ana kuleana Hawaii. Ke no noia ako nei makōa, ke kalokala oae nei makōi kaohopomai ka ika'o ia malu no makōi ke ꞌahiāhi. Oi a'i makō eku nei enōhō nei ilohō ke ꞌia jale aina. Ma ke ꞌula nei ikapaia okavana na koa. No leila ke koe, ma ke ꞌia vahi kaya ulu. No kapo e Hawaii, makō e hui nei. E kokua meia makōi, ka makō ha'avi anaiko makō ike kana au. Oi a'i makō e ho'olohe, a ho'olonopono. Ka makō mea e awamonei, no ke ꞌahiāhi a ke ꞌia mau e ki maiana. Lalela ke koe, me ka mahaloia oae, na o e malama ke ꞌia papahana, ke ꞌahiāhi. Apau ke ꞌia halavai e ho'iho'i a'i makō ko makō wahiku pono. Ke puli nei makōia oi, ke ꞌia mau mana'o ma'o kainoa Yesu Kristo. Iola'i makō, amene. Mahalo.
Mahalo, Hailama. Aloha no, aloha pumehana kako. I would like to call this evening's meeting to order. Let the record reflect that today is Tuesday, December 9th. Can I please have a roll call?
Eo.
Eo.
Aloha mai kako.
Present.
Eo.
Mahalo, Lehuwa, Velina. And welcome to the Second Oahu Island Community Meeting this year. We are very happy to be here and share this time with all of you. This evening's meeting will be broadcasted on Olelo TV Channel 55 and will be available via livestream. And you can watch it online at www.oha.org/livestream or go to OHA's YouTube and on OHA's Facebook pages. At this time, I would like to ask each trustee to introduce themselves and their staff here. And we'll start off with trustee Akina.
Aloha mai kako, e ma'o aloha, ame ma'o kupuna. Aloha. O ke li'i Akina ko'ui noa. And I feel very much at home here because our ohana has lived in the Papukulea, Pa'ua and Punchbowl area many years before. And I am the proud parent of a graduate of Kawana Na'kua Middle School, Ma'lo'a Akina. He says aloha to everyone, including the security guards. But delighted to be here with you. I am trustee-at-large, Ke li'i Akina, and I'm with my assistant today, Remi Ke li'i Ho'umalu. Aloha, Remi. Your mana'o means a great deal to us, that's why we're here. So we want to hear what you have to say and we want to be available to you. I want to say mahalo for taking the time to come out tonight. Aloha, talk with you later.
Aloha kako, my name is Luana Alapa and I'm the trustee for the islands of Molokai and Lenai. And I'm going solo tonight, so there's no staff here, not able to make it. But definitely looking forward to meeting you and hearing your mana'o this evening. Mahalo.
Trustee Ahuna.
Velina mai mikke aloha. My name is Dan Ahuna and I am the trustee for the islands of Kauai and Ni'ihau. I was originally born and raised Papukulea and now reside in Kapaa. So it's very nice to be back home. I want to thank our trustee over here, trustee Kalea Akaka, for putting on these meetings. These meetings are very important for us. You know, this is how we make good decisions, so it's important that we hear from all of you. So thank you for being here. With me tonight is my kako'o, Ivan Mahelona.
Mahalo, trustee Ahuna. Trustee Souza.
Aloha mai kako, trustee Keoni Souza. I'd like to introduce Rochelle Kim, trustee aide. It's a pleasure to be here and just like trustee Ahuna said, mahalo to trustee Kalea Akaka for setting up this meeting. It's very important for us to be in the community and I engage one-on-one. So look forward to hearing your concerns this evening and look forward to talking stories. Aloha.
Mahalo. And I am trustee Kalea Akaka and I'm honored to serve as your OHA Oahu trustee. Mahalo nu'vi to all of you that are joining us this evening so that we can hear the needs and concerns and celebrations of our community here. And the reason why we are having this meeting here this evening is because the goal is really to try to be within or as close as we can to our Hawaiian homestead area. And so that we can make ourselves available to our community so that we can see on the pulse and the needs and concerns of what's so important for our people and hear the voices of our people. So mahalo for joining us this evening. I would also like to introduce my team Akaka. We have Mark Watanabe here, as well as Nathan Takeuchi. And also another integral part of my team Akaka is my ohana, which is my husband and baby back there. Mahalo. Oh, that's very nice, thank you. I'd like to call upon our COO Keoni Shon to introduce our staff supporting us this evening.
Mahalo nu'vi, trustee. Aloha mai kako, Ova'o Keishan Keikina, ka po nu'vi no ke ke ana kuleana o Hawaii. My name is Keishan Keikina. I serve as the chief operating officer of the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. I would like to take this time to thank all of the hard-working limahana at OHA. Tonight, we have with us in support our Senior Director of Hawaiian Cultural Affairs, Hailama Fardin, our Director of Community Engagement, Lisa Von Sekona, our Director of Communications, Bill Brennan, our Operations Manager, Royce Campbell, our IT Systems Engineer and Administrator, Arlene Aguinaldo, our Beneficiary Services Agents, Ka'imo Molestine, Myra Olakua, Star Keili Kani, and Ilima Keller. We also have Lucy Myers, our Genealogy Specialist, Lorene Ke'aloa, our Travel Services Agent, and Jason Lee's, our Multimedia Designer. Mahalo nu'vi.
Mahalo, Keoni Shon. Mahalo to all here in attendance and virtually, and as well as those that will be watching this in the future. Like it was touched on earlier, this is all possible because of all the limahana, all those hands, hearts, and minds that make today possible. So mahalo anu'vi for making it possible for us to join together. I also would like to acknowledge we have a government official here with us this evening. We have Representative Della Albaladi. Mahalo. And also mahalo nu'vi anu'vi to Olelo for their presence and kukua in broadening our reach to the community. We have a number of mahalos to cover this evening. Mahalo also to the Hawaii State Archives, as well as... Thank you. As well as King Kamehameha V, Judiciary History Center, Ali'olani Hale, for welcoming us today during our site visits. We have had amazing, phenomenal site visits today and they were so special. And I look forward to our community presentations and touching on some of the very, very poignant mail of history that we have that were shared with us today. So continuing on, as we go into this evening, there are certain things I would like to note. We do have refreshments at the table at the entrance over here, so please partake if you're interested. And we also have our Native Hawaiian Registry Program available to all those that are interested in partaking. We have it at the tables over here, as well as various mail and handouts. So I wanted to show to the camera some of the various things that we have there. So the first thing we have is Ova'i Oha. This is a wonderful coloring book for the keiki. And we also have our Kava'i Ola, the latest issue. And some really nice sticky notes that OHA has, as well as our Kava'i Ola fan. I also would invite you all to check out the various mail that the Hawaii State Archives, as well as the Judiciary Center, has provided to us as well. And perhaps when you're presenting, if you can share with us some of what you brought in those brochures. All right, so we will now move on to our next agenda item. Item three, which is status of OHA activities. Lehuwa, do we have anyone signed up to speak on this agenda item? Mahalo. Keoni Shon, I will hand it over to you.
Mahalo nu'vi, trustee Akaka. I'm going to ask that our slide deck be pulled up for the island community meeting. Mahalo. So many of you may be familiar with our Mani Malio La strategic plan. It's a 15-year strategic plan that is based in three foundations. Ohana, mo'umehehu or culture, and also aina, speaking to both land and water. Then it does branch out into four areas of impact. Our educational pathways, our health outcomes, quality housing, and also our economic stability. So some of the funding highlights for the island of Oahu include one of the landmark decisions that was approved by the Board of Trustees in the biennial budget this year, which is the largest investment into Hawaiian-focused charter schools in all of OHA's history. So they are investing $6.78 million into those schools. There are currently six Hawaiian-focused charter schools on the island of Oahu and 12 Hawaiian medium schools on this island. Other funding milestones have been the investment of $820,000 in re-establishing the Aha'PO program, as well as the Washington DC Fellowship, the continued support of Jabsum, Native Hawaiian Health Program funded with over $900,000, the Papukulea Community Development Corporation, which is funded in the amount of $100,000, and also from Papukulea, the Kula No'apoe Hawaii, funded with $500,000. This organization specifically gave a presentation at our legislators event and has made many, many different strong impacts in the areas of health. They are serving over 400 different kapuna. Also a quick update on our Iola program. So you may have seen this in the news and on all of our social media channels, but the Board of Trustees approved $6.1 million in emergency relief funding. These were for any Native Hawaiian beneficiaries that can qualify and were affected by the government shutdown this year. There are two avenues of support. One is a $350 benefit for food assistance for anyone who had SNAP benefits that were interrupted. There is also a $1,200 check available for Native Hawaiian federal government workers who may have missed or had interruptions to their pay. This program is being administered by the Hawaiian Council, which is formerly known as CNHA. And we have distributed more than $1 million thus far. We've actually approved somewhere around $1,200,000. If you feel that anyone that you know qualifies for this program, please encourage them to apply, to go on to oha.org or onto the Hawaiian Council website listed on this slide. Mahalo.
Mahalo, Keoni Shon. Our next agenda item is community presentations. And first on our list is Adam Jensen, PhD State Archivist of the Hawaii State Archives. Mahalo for organizing today's site visit. This is something that we've wanted to do for some years and you made it very, very, very special for us. If you can also just touch on some of the very poignant mail that you shared with us today, that I would greatly appreciate it. Mahalo. Kalama, you know, I'm sorry, Adam. Oh, Adam. Sorry, real quick, I just have to ask because of how things are organized here. Do we have any testifiers for this agenda item? Aole? Mahalo. Please take it away, Adam.
Thank you so very much. Aloha mai kako. I am Dr. Adam Jensen. It is my privilege and honor to serve as your state archivist and administrator of the public archives. I'm speechless to be here before all of you. I really appreciate this opportunity. I've been state archivist for 10 years and we have been negligent in helping you understand what we do. So I appreciate this opportunity to share with you a little bit about what the State Archives is and what we do. Specifically, I've been asked to speak on genealogy and land research, which obviously is incredibly important, and some of the most sacred records that we preserve. To address trustee, some of the things we saw today, I don't even know where to start. There's just so much. And I would invite all of the trustees at any time to reach out. I would love to give you a tour, continue on with what we had. But we looked at a Hawaiian rare book collection that we have that's over 5,000 volumes strong. That includes multiple items that were endorsed by Her Majesty Queen Lili'ou'Kulani. We didn't even look at the Bu'ko Mehele from Like'e Like'e, where she is writing and composing some of her mele. We saw the bracelet of Queen Kap'iolani with the family portrait in the locket. We went upstairs and saw the daguerreotype of Her Majesty Queen Lili'ou'Kulani at approximately 15 years of age. And it's a daguerreotype, so it is incredibly vibrant. And it's such an amazing portrait of this young woman with so much going for her. It's just incredible. We looked at some of the artifacts that we have because we are a museum, if not in name, in action. We have thousands of artifacts in our collection, 260 of which are on loan to Iolani Palace, 80 objects on loan to Washington Place, and even one portrait on loan to the Judicial History Center. So we try to support other organizations as well with the richness of our collection. We were able to go into the safe inside the vault, just to give you an idea of how important these records are. We looked at the Bu'ko Mehele, the original land division of 1848. We looked at Her Majesty's handwritten aloha oi on her personal letterhead. We looked at the letters of Liholijo as he's learning to write in 1823, practicing because his teacher told him it's very important that you practice writing. And also two of the only known documents in the Western Hemisphere signed by Kamehameha Paeo, who was functionally illiterate, so when you see his signature, it's literally an X. Because he had enough faith in his staff. When they said, "Sign this," he said, "Okay." And that's just the tip of the iceberg of what we have. Our holdings are 14,000 cubic feet, thousands of artifacts dating all the way back to 1790. And we have millions of pages of this online. And so we're going to talk about a little bit of that today. So specifically, if I can hit the correct button, if the correct button will work. If I have to, like this? I must be smarter than the remote. Oh, good, it's not just me. So the history of the archives. Legislatively, we were started in 1905 with the mandate to quote, "collect all public archives." Period. That is an incredibly broad mandate. And so we've taken that to mean any record that protects your rights, your identity, your property, or your history is eligible for preservation in the archives. While we are primarily an archive of governmental records, we are not the state's archives. We are the public archives for the people to hold the government accountable. Did they do what they said they were going to do? Were they good stewards of the public funds? Yes, prove it. Let me see the records. If not, we have the documentation to hold them to task. And so, apparently we have weak batteries maybe? Is it working now? And so our mission is to collect, protect, and make accessible. Anybody for any reason can come visit the archives. We do not charge. All we ask is that you register and that you are respectful of the records that are there. They never leave the archives. They have one research room and that is the only place you can see it because we have a full-time security guard and cameras watching all of the stations. These records are too important to risk loss, alteration, deterioration. And so as a result of that, there are some hoops you have to jump through. But beyond that, we don't, again, don't care why you're there. We just want to know, how can we help? And our records are incredibly extensive. Not just governmental, but 500 individual manuscripts of individuals or organizations that have shaped Hawaii's history, that have contributed in some significant way and must be remembered. And if you don't mind, may I just present from the laptop and just use the spacebar? Is it working? Mostly, kind of, sort of? All right, there we go. Well, there's a lot of nexts is the problem. I have a lot of transitions coming in. Okay, so we do have a digital archives, which we spun up about 10 years ago. So we are adamant that everybody must have equal access to this ike. Some people cannot travel. They work 9:00 to 4:00, Monday through Friday. They cannot physically travel. It's obscene to expect somebody on the island of Maui to have to take off, fly over, rent a car, and drive so they can access their documentary heritage. So we have received some grants, we do have a lot of initiatives. We've digitized millions of pages of information and made it accessible to everyone. The most important to this august body is likely the half a million pages from the Foreign Office and Executive of the Kingdom, online, accessible right now to everybody. We focused very heavily on the 1890 to 1900 timeframe because that is an incredibly contentious part of Hawaii's history. And we wanted those who participated in it to share their voice with you so that you don't take my word for it, I don't tell you your history, you let them, who were there, tell you the history. And then you can act on that. So we have finding aids, research aids, and the digital archives to help guide you. Only 1% of our holdings are online. But some of the most important records are online. You do have to come in unfortunately to research a vast majority, but that's when you start getting deeper into the weeds on these things. And for services, we do offer certified copies. Of course, we have translation because not everybody is fluent in alelo Hawaii, particularly Kingdom era with legal technical terms. So we have one of the best translators in the state available to do that so that when you want to go to court, you have a certified copy of an official governmental translation to be able to take with you. And then also, we have copy scan services. We have a digital imaging system in the Archives Research Room, so you can take your own scans for free and take them home with you. So regarding genealogy research, very clear what we have and what we do not have. A vast majority of our marriage, birth, death records end at 1900. Once the territory took over, unfortunately, much of that went to either Bureau of Health, Board of Health, or the Bureau of Conveyance. So they have most of the contemporary, modern records. But if you're starting to research from the Kingdom period, you can see on the dates up there what we have, including some of the census records. And we had some discussions today about getting our tax rolls digitized as well because the whole concept of marriage, birth, death is a Western affectation. Many Kanaka did not want to do that process because it didn't make sense. So particularly in the 1830s to 1860s, there are people who didn't have any registrations. But the government always wants its pound of flesh, so they definitely paid taxes. So it's another place for you to try and find some of those pukas that you may not find more official types of documents from. Our birth records actually start in 1852. And a really interesting factoid of that, it was the Board of Public Instruction that was responsible for birth records. Because that was the one wing of the government that was embedded in the local community. The schools that dealt with the children. They were the ones that were right there and knew when new babies were coming. So they actually were the ones that copied and reported those types of records. And here's an example of one of the reports that were turned in from 1861. Now marriage records. Marriage records start in 1826 and are really kind of a mess up until the 1850s because it was up to the local kahu as he made his circuits from village to town to record, "Okay, I performed the following marriages in this area," and to put them into his journal. So not quite what you expect to find for marriage records today. So it does require more research because again, there wasn't necessarily family names. So there was a Keoni and Nu'uano. I hope there wasn't a second Keoni and Nu'uano because then you have to try and sort out age and everything else and do backtrack. And now you have to find two people instead of one. So it is a bit of a challenge. And then death records. Also, death records were from the Department of Public Instruction as well. Because again, they're embedded in the community. And so we have those starting about 1852 up until 1899. And one of our most sacred charges, the records of Kalopapa. We have the records of all of the patients examined, marriages, births, deaths, and also all the kukua helpers. In support of Kalopapa Month, which was started two, three years ago, we released the index of all of these names. Some of these are actual medical records, so we're very sensitive about digitizing and releasing the medical records of Hansen's Disease patients. But all of their names are available, they all are searchable online. We want to make sure that that branch of the family does not be forgotten. And so those are accessible on our digital archives. Now regarding land records. Most of our land records date from 1830 up through 1918. And really fascinating, we did have a grant during the Great Depression and part of the CCC initiatives to index our Department of Interior files. So it's very possible you can find records where your kapuna was in charge of taking care of the street out in front of a school or was asking for street maintenance or a new school. So those records are indexed. All of the names have been indexed by last name so that you can search through them and be able to find them, along with the governor files and the Foreign Office and Executive. So the Foreign Office of the Kingdom and basically the Office of the Mo'i, the executive of the government. All indexed, all searchable by name. So our land registers, very interesting. We're talking early, early land ownership where folks had to go and register for their property that their ohana had been occupying for millennia. So we have those, as well as the testimonies to say, yes, I've known this person my entire life, their family has born on this property, they died on this property, the evi are in the ground for millennia. And really fascinating opportunity to go in and learn some of the history of these families through people who knew them and be able to find other associated individuals. They are both in Olelo Pelikane and Olelo Hawaii, and we do have translations of those as well. And then of course, our land commission awards from 1846 to 1855. Absolutely incredible documents signed by the Mo'i. So we have indexes of those as well, so you can search by either area or by name. And really fascinating, we have an index of these LCAs where we will tell you how large the property was. So now we can also start to do some demographic analysis as well of these areas. We have royal patents from 1847 to 1961. And we have survey notes, which are our most detailed. When you get back in Kingdom, the geographic boundaries are very loose. To the big rock, to the bend in the river, to the large tree. Because formal surveying hadn't come yet. But as we start to get into the survey notes, we have absolute directional cardinal ordinal maps of where the exact property boundary lines are. So very important today, given how important aina and water rights are. And then we also, this is just mostly the genealogy aspects. And we have an incredible richness of other types of information that I really want to bring to this body's attention. Here is a photo, 1870, of Ali'olani Hale. You can see the barracks. What don't you see between the barracks and Ali'olani Hale?
No roads.
No Iolani Palace. So this photograph, so just below, just below the judiciary building, you can see all the trees. The palace isn't there yet. Now we jump forward to 1950 and you can just see the palace right there. You can see the barracks hiding there. And now you can see the armory that had to be destroyed to build the state capitol. You can see Central Union Church, Schuman Carriage, right there. You can see Central Union Church, Schuman Carriage right there. All of this property is now the state capital, right through there. So an incredible richness of visual evidence, including aerials from the 1920s, 1930s. So you can really see the exponential growth of Hawaii and judge for yourself whether that's good or not. And then we also have not a lot of maps, but our maps tend to be the much older kind. The UH has a much richer, larger map collection, but we do have some incredibly interesting ones. And I would draw your attention to the fire insurance maps for the areas of Waiki Ki up through downtown Chinatown. These are incredibly informative. 1890, we have every decade up to 1950. So you can look at exactly what structures were there. Was it a dwelling? Was it a grocer? Was it a lawyer's office? Was it a farrier? And really dig into what did this look like before. And then of course, the most important resource I would turn you to is the digital archives at digitalarchives.hawaii.gov. So if you go to that page and click on the browse catalog, you will come up with a list of the record creators. Going to page 2 at the bottom, you will see that the State Archives is there. Hopefully in the next couple of months, we're going to change that so the State Archives is the very first listing and you don't have to drive down through it. But if you click on the Hawaii State Archives, you will see we have publications, finding aids, reference microfilm. We had over 2,000 rolls of reference microfilm in the public research room that required you to come in. The pandemic was absolutely horrible, but it gave us an opportunity to step back and say, how can we better serve the people? We digitized every single one of those rolls of microfilm and they're now freely accessible online. You don't have to come to the Archives to see it. Unprocessed collections, manuscript collections, and our photograph collection. I warn you, do not go into the photograph collection. You will fall down that rabbit hole and you will not be seen for at least a week. Within that, we received a grant to digitize all 55,000 of our glass plate negatives. 1880 to 1920, including the J.J. Williams collection. J.J. Williams was the photographer to the royal family. All of the royal portraits that we are accustomed to seeing as photographs was by J.J. We have not just the formal, but the five, six other photos taken during that session where he's in different poses, different clothing. It gives you a different view of our Ali'i. Some of them much more human, much more personal, less very straight-backed militant formal soul, you know, with all the badges and royal orders on there, just like us. And it's absolutely an incredible view, so I encourage you to fall down that rabbit hole. You won't regret it. And then finally, importantly for this discussion, the indexes. So the indexes are those things where we have tried to help you do the research by being able to look very quickly using keyword searches. Any of these levels, you can see that there's a box up at the top that you can enter in a term, a name, and it will return all of the hits for you. So depending on how high and broad a net you want to cast, you could do it at the very top level and see how wide the universe is. Or you can drill down to just one specific record set and say, I want to know, are there any divorce records in here? Are there some scandals in the family we don't know about? So it's really fun because we do have, we do have all of the civil cases and all of the criminal cases indexed as well. So maybe there, again, maybe like to be some interesting family scuttlebutt that you don't know about that are in there. And so I will leave you with this photograph of Iolani Palace from about 1889. And thank you for this opportunity to share with you at least a little bit of what we do.
Mahalo, Adam. Before we go into any, thank you. Yes, can you share on what you brought with you today?
I would be happy to, and I apologize if I was remiss on this. We did bring our genealogy brochure in both Olelo Pelikane and Olelo Hawaii that has exactly what we have. So we want you to know before you go. So it has a list of what types of records and what date ranges we have, as well as a brochure just on the general archives and some of our wonderful holdings. And I do believe in here is a featured document with Kamehameha Paeia's actual signature in here. And then lastly, we have these cards bilingualy. On the back is the important thing. This is a reproduction of the 30th anniversary of La Ko'oko'a. Exact scale, exact size, exact color. On the back, we put a little bit of information about La Ko'oko'a. And we digitized some of the most relevant documents and have it available for you to be able to download, to read for yourself.
Adam, can you also share on the concert, the upcoming concert in January that you touched on today?
Thank you. She knows more about this than I do. I would like to invite all of you to our January 24th concert at Orvis Auditorium. We are having a concert honoring the 135th anniversary of the coronation of Queen Lili'u Okalani, which was January 29th, 1891. We have some amazing artists coming in that will be playing the music of Nalani Eha on actual Kingdom era instruments. So we are honoring the queen with her own music on instruments that existed during her reign. And then we will also be bringing in a curated selection of Her Majesty's manuscripts and artifacts that we are going to be putting on the stage while the artists perform. And then after the concert, we'll invite the public up to be able to see these items. Thank you for that.
Mahalo. So before we continue on with any questions in Manao, I also wanted to touch on some points here. The wows that I've been seeing throughout the room as Adam has been presenting, when you're showing certain documents and imagery, as well as the wows and the breath that was taken by Auntie Lucy Meyer today when you were viewing what was in that vault says something to me. So today we had Kale Hennis as well as Auntie Lucy, who works on our genealogy and various documents at the Office of Wine Affairs, join us today and touch on also the ongoing maintained relationship that OHA has had with the Archives throughout the years. And it's very nice to know that OHA has had a hand and that there is continued interest in how we can preserve and digitize these mea and from what we learned what happened in Lahaina, certain safety precautions that need to be made. And what was touched on earlier, but I really want to give some more weight to, when it was mentioned that we saw a document that was signed by Kamehameha, it is an actual handwritten document with King Kamehameha Ekahi, King Kamehameha I, handwritten signature via an X made by him at that time, which is very, very special, and I didn't even know it existed, as well as the handwritten notes and songs by Queen Lili'u herself on her own signature stationery. So that was very, very, very special. So members, do we have any Manao or questions? Yes, trustee Akina?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Adam, I want to thank you so much for all the work you've done. When we first met about a decade ago, you had a mountain of work to get started on. And during that period of time, you and your team have accomplished a great deal. Just very proud of it. And I'm very excited about the way you bring to life our history and preserve it for generations to come. I have a question. About what percentage of the collection has been digitized? How much more do we have to go? What is your vision for where that project will end up?
Thank you for that. I would guesstimate we're at 1%. And we're going to have a hard time reaching any saturation because we do not stop preserving history. We just brought in 10 pallets, pallets of material that has been donated to us. So it is going to be a never-ending process, but we are committed to focusing on the most important records that must be protected, that must be publicly accessible for free anywhere in the world. And so we welcome input on what those are. We welcome partnerships with OHA to help move us in that direction because these are critical documents that people must have access to. It's their documentary heritage. It's their story.
That's incredible. Well, thank you for your commitment to that task, and I wish you the very best.
Thank you.
Any other, any other Manao? Trustee Susan?
Hello, Adam. Apologize I couldn't make it there today, but I just reached out to my staff. We're going to set up a separate meeting. Where's your primary source of funding?
Our exclusive source of funding is through the legislature. All of our grants have dried up. They've been canceled.
I see. Okay. Thank you.
Mahalo. I also want to note that Jason, who's taking a photograph right now, Jason Lee's, I'm so thankful he was there today to take photos as well as my team to video some of the mea that we experienced today. It was just absolutely phenomenal. And I did, I knew that we would be embarking on something special, but I really had no idea in the magnificence of what you would introduce to us today. Mahalo.
And if I may, I do want to point out that these items that you saw are not reserved just for trustees or the cultural elite. These are accessible to everyone. You know, some of them, we require appointments. My staff has to handle it. But these items belong to the people. I am just the custodian.
Thank you so much, Adam. Our next presenter is Kainoa Daines, President of the Friends of the Judiciary History Center of Hawaii, as well as the Executive Director, Matt Matisse. Mahalo to your team for making today a continue on our historical journey. It was very, very nice to hear of some of how what we learned in the earlier site visit ties into our second site visit.
Yeah, aloha mai kako. I'm so sorry I missed the site visit myself. I have a day job. So I wasn't able to attend, but next time I'll be there, I promise. Kainoa Daines, quote unquote, "I am the president of the Friends of the Judiciary History Center." And I'm honored to be here today to share just a little bit more about this special place that most people have no idea exists. How many of you show of hands, besides those who went on the tour today, have ever been inside the King Kamehameha V Judiciary History Center? Yeah, five of you. For those on TV, you can see this room is packed with thousands of people. And only five people raised their hands.
Online, they're online.
Online, right, right. You guys, yeah, so that really is the percentage though, that people don't know it exists. And so my background is in the visitor industry. And I was taking a group of travel agents to, I think I was taking them between Hawaiian Mission Houses and Iolani Palace, and I had to kill some time. I also wear another hat that is the former chair of the King Kamehameha Celebration Commission, so very familiar with the lei draping ceremonies at the statue. And so I was giving them a little brief history. I thought, why don't we go inside and see? I heard there's a museum inside. I thought, how boring. A Judiciary History Center, that's just, they were going to fall asleep in there. But I walked in and I began to understand what this treasure trove of Ika and Manao is housed there. It goes back from the time of the kapu to today. And it made me, at first I'm like, laws, blah, blah, blah. That's what they do at the Capitol. Why do I? Well, who was dictating the law during the monarchy? During the time of Kamehameha, whatever he said was law. Whatever the king said was law, and that's what encompasses this museum. This History Center shares things that I just, I didn't think existed. I think there's, oh. PowerPoint presentation. Is this the clicker? I know I'm better than Adam, but hello. What's going on here? Is it, oh, it did it. You see it did it. Oh, it went too far. I always go too far. I'm so sorry. Yeah, no, that was the right one. Oh, it's down to go forward. It's backwards. Okay, mahalo. This building, we said last year, was it February? April, February. We celebrated 150 years of this building, the building itself. And so just a little why it's named Ali'i Olani Hale. Named in honor of King Kamehameha V, kapu'iva, whose name was Ali'i Olani. And so he had a fascination with an architect in Australia. He loved his work. And so he had a rendering of a building drafted. And he wanted this to be his home, his palace. Yeah, he wanted a new Iolani Palace. The one prior was a wooden building, termite-ridden. So many of our buildings in Hawaii are. And so he had this blueprint drawn up. He went to the legislature at the time and said, can we build my Hale, my palace for me? They said, sir, we only have enough funds to build one building, right? They had wanted his palace, but they also needed a government building. They had two buildings on the docket that they wanted to have built. They only had budget for one. So he said, you know what? The original Iolani Palace is okay. Take these renderings of this building from this architect in Australia and build a government house, build the Capitol building. And so the building that you see today would have been the Iolani Palace had Kamehameha V not said, you know what, take the blueprint that I had drafted up for my own home and let's make it the people's home. And hence the name Ali'i Olani Hale, named in his honor. And so last year, we celebrated the 150th anniversary of the building. And it actually ended, the construction ended under Kalakaua's reign. So it took a little bit of time to complete this massive building. Who's been inside the building? You may not have been into the museum. Yeah, but the building itself, it's today, the Supreme Court Building. You know, it's where our justices reside. It's where the third branch of government is in Honolulu, is inside Ali'i Olani Hale. Judge, Chief Justice CJ. You know, I didn't know CJ was short for Chief Justice at first. I thought everybody's initials were CJ. I thought, how convenient. Sorry, I work in tourism. I think I'm the only member on the board that's not a lawyer, which is fun for me. In case anything happens to me, I got a lot of friends. Anyway, Chief Justice William Richardson, he decided to enact and create the Friends of the Judiciary History Center, which again, I'm proud to represent today. The sort of nonprofit arm to help keep the building open. Our staff, again, this is Matt Matisse. Matt, please stand and wave. Our Executive Director, his mighty team of four. Yeah, team of four are actually employees of the judiciary. So they are state employees, but we support them as the Friends to do things that they're sort of restricted by state funds, if you will, because like the Archives, we're primarily funded as well by the legislature. And we'll get into a little bit more of that in a minute.
Before you go on to the next part of the slide, can we just go back to that photo?
This one?
You know, I have to say, the one where they're doing the blessing.
CJ.
Yes. I'm very happy to see, I have a member of my ohana on there.
There's an Akaka in there. Okay, sorry.
Reverend Abraham Akaka, I lovingly call Uncle Kai. So it looks like he was doing the blessing there. Oh.
Yeah, that was the grand opening of the center and he did the blessing.
Oh, how nice. What a pleasant surprise.
Lari Ma'alapilio in the far left, she was the first to second.
You can talk into the microphone.
Oh, sorry. Anyways, a lot of very notable people in that picture.
1989? No, what does that say? 89. I wasn't even born yet. No, I was. And just for sake of order, was there any testifiers against me, against us? Just checking. You didn't ask that question, so I just wanted to make sure for Sunshine Law that we're okay. The sun has set. Mahalo. All right. So again, for those who haven't come inside, actually, right now is a good time to come. Christmas decorations are in full effect. It looks amazing. So this is the entryway, the foyer, or the foyer, depending where you're from. But this is what the entryway looks like with the double staircase going upstairs to the Supreme Court Room, where we do a lot of our education programs, again, which I'll talk about in a moment. But if you're a Christmas decoration fan, come check it out now. Again, it's free to come in. There are metal detectors, so careful. Yeah, metal detectors as you come inside. It's a state facility, but the decorations are amazing. And so to the left, once you enter to the left, is the King Kamehameha V Judiciary History Center. Some of these pictures here are what it looked like, and we're going to show you a few renderings of what it will look like as we're in the process of a Capitol campaign now to really revitalize and make the materials, the resources more accessible to the public. Okay, so some of the things that we do at the center, so it's not just a museum. It is a museum, but we have exhibits and archives there. So we do have our own archives separate from Adam's archives. So we share, yeah, but we have archives specific to law, specific to cases. And a lot of them are in Olelo Hawaii. So two of our staff are fluent to be on board, yes, as a lot of our material is as well, to be able to help, as Adam has staff as well, to translate some of these laws for people today who need assistance with land cases, et cetera. for people today who need assistance with land cases, et cetera. So it's, um, it's an active resource as well, not just a history center or museum. Uh, we have public education, or public programs. Uh, that picture on the bottom left was a partnership with the Pu'u Cemetery Theater, um, with the Hawaiian Mission Houses, where they bring actors in who are portraying people. Um, so this woman here is portraying the very first curatris, the first woman, because this was the Hawaii's first, um, national museum, yeah, the first national museum of the Kingdom of Hawaii was here in Ali'i Olani Hale, um, and so transporting you back in time. Uh, we also have sort of Teach the Teacher programs, education programs, to help teachers teaching civic education. Yeah, so come into the source to learn about that. So we have excellent programs there that Matt and his staff do a phenomenal job at, at executing. Uh, so again, this is what it looks like today. Um, some very simple museum exhibition-related material, uh, the 1913 courtroom, uh, that was used, I think we said the Rapun water case, Supreme Court, oh, it's upstairs. So this is a courtroom that is used for mock trials as well today. Um, you can rent it out for parties. No, you can't do that. Well, maybe you can. No, anyway, um, so we're about to step into, again, this renovation. We're, we're in the process of raising some funds so that it's more accessible, it's more, for lack of a better word, respectfully interesting for some people who may think boring judiciary history center, but no, come inside. Once you come through the doors, as some of you got to experience today, you're like, wow, I had no idea what was in here. So this renovation will make it more interactive, pictures rotating, um, displays rotating, et cetera. So yeah, it's a very interesting place that I agreed to be on the board of because I fell in love with it. Yeah, it's a beautiful place and this story needs to be told, um, and this renovation will help us to tell it better. Civ, uh, martial law, real interesting time in Hawaii's history from forty-two to forty-five, when the World War II was over, and how different Hawaii was under martial law, different, I'm just choosing that word specifically in this public forum. Um, but learning about that timeframe through the Judiciary History Center, we have a, uh, display right now speaking to the Honouli Uli Anniversary, the, um, interment camps for the Japanese citizens of Hawaii and telling that story. So it's, it's a broad perspective of history in Hawaii. Okay, did we hit the end? Did we run out of steam? Adam took all the steam out of the room. I'm just kidding. Anyway, that might be the end. Yeah, okay, it felt like the end to me. So with that, you don't get my contact information because I'm a volunteer. You gotta check with Matt if you have any, I'm just kidding. We bring, we did bring some literature, uh, Makalelo Hawaii and, um, Makalelo Haule as well, uh, to learn a little bit more about the Judiciary History Center, the programs. We do have a lot of, um, programs online as well, uh, social media, very active social media following. So with that, are there any questions from the trustees or?
Yeah.
No? Okay, good, no.
I also wanted, Matt, can you share some of the amazing, um, documents that were shared and display of what was shared today?
Uh, yes.
And how that ties into, um, some of the challenges that we're experiencing currently?
We have a unique collection of documents, um, um, not, not found in the state archives, but we have examples of probate, like, so we have probate bonds. Um, so we have wills of, um, wills from the eighteen hundreds, we have, um, tax records, we have very unique collections of, uh, people like CJ Richardson. Um, Anthony Gardner, uh, was the Attorney General during World War II. He's responsible for challenging martial law and, um, and actually, um, ending martial law, you know, during World War II. So we have a really unique connection. I think it might be useful to, to, let me explain how, where I am and where Kainoa is. So, um, the King Kamehameha the Fifth Judiciary History Center, it's, as Kainoa mentioned, it's kind of the brainchild of CJ Richardson. When he was Chief Justice, he wanted to renovate Eli'i Olani Hale, and part of that renovation included, um, a citizens group to kind of, um, bridge the gap between the judiciary and, and the public. And that group ended up becoming the Friends. They created the Judiciary History Center. It opened in eighteen ninety-nine. In nineteen ninety, the legislature stepped in and, um, created the Judiciary History Set, Center by statute. So we, the King Kamehameha the Fifth Judiciary History Center, we're an administrative program of the state judiciary. So four of us, four employees, our salaries are state judiciary salaries. We get a very small operating fund, we get an operating fund from the judiciary, um, through the judiciary's budget from the legislature. So we get anywhere from five thousand a year to maybe twenty-five thousand a year. That covers basic operating expenses. Um, we rely on Kainoa and his team, the Friends, to raise money. So we generate through the Friends, usually about a hundred fifty thousand a year, um, to conduct teacher workshops. Um, we've been, we've gotten a couple, um, very nice grants from the Institute of Museum and Library Services, um, where, to help us with, uh, planning the renovation. So, um, we're, we're a state court program, but we rely on the Friends for, um, for grants and for financial support. Just wanted to throw that out, at you.
Mahalo. And, um, can you name specifically the, when we're looking at the probate, uh, documents, what that special document that was shown to us and how that ties into Bernice Pawahi Bishop as well as Princess Ruth?
You know, I, I was, because you folks were all in that room, I was out, I, I didn't, I don't remember what that document was.
It was, uh, the will, I want to say the, the will with, um, signed by Charles Bishop.
Okay, and it was, oh, Bernice Pawahi's?
It, well, it had to do with what was being bequeathed down the line and, um, and how it eventually turned, went to, um, Princess Ruth, and then the lands, and went to Bernice.
Yeah.
So that was very, very special to see the actual document in person. And then can you also share with us some of the history of your family's history and how you carry on that legacy at Ali'i Olani? I think that's a very interesting part of, um, what you continue to do in your Kuleana there.
I have a, um, a fun family tie. My great-great-grandmother is Princess Teresa Owano Ka'ohele Lani La Anui, and, um, she was a very accomplished, um, Hawaiian woman. She, uh, published newspapers, um, very active in political affairs. Um, she also liked to marry a lot, and her first marriage was to Alexander Joy Cartwright, um, Alexander Joy Cartwright Junior, follow me. His father was, um, the inventor of baseball back in New York, but, um, his dad, uh, Cartwright, was the keynote speaker at the cornerstone ceremony of the building. So when they broke the ground for the building, my great, 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 great grandfather was the, was the, uh, first speaker on the program. So that's kind of fun.
Mahalo. Well, mahalo, Nui, for, um, sharing, sharing on what you shared today. And also, I wanted to note that in my first going there, within the last year or two, was with, uh, then trustee Millilani Trask, and she brought me there so that I could learn more about Ali'i Olani and the history of those halls. As unfortunately, some of the discussions that were had there in yesteryear century was regarding those that were trying to overthrow our government. So I think that was something very poignant that was shared with us, those halls. And also, I want to, um, acknowledge Auntie Pili Lilo here is a volunteer docent who gives tours at Ali'i Olani Hale as well.
Our favorite docent.
Mahalo. Uh, I understand that trustee Alapa, you have a question?
Oh, this question is for Kainoa. So you mentioned about, um, the fundraising efforts to do a second wing. Um, what are you looking at as far as the cost in, in raising monies?
Yeah, so the gen, this overall Capitol campaign total, it's a three-year campaign, it's approximately seven million dollars, because it's a lot of work. This museum hasn't had any real aloha in a very long time, but we're doing it spread out over the three years. So working with foundations, working with NHOs, trying to, private organizations, just, you know, so the board and our Capitol Campaign Committee does comprise a lot of lawyers, judges, people in the community, people with contacts, and so we're, it's really kind of a grassroots effort, um, to elevate, I think, Hawaii's best-kept secret. We don't want it to be a secret anymore. Come and experience that. So that's a, that's the big Capitol Campaign budget, but we are getting chunks. We were receiving some federal assistance, and that's fluctuated and ebbed and flowed. So we're, we're continuing to work. The three years may expand out to four years and five years, but we're trying to keep it within that three-year window, which we're into year, year and a half already, I think. So we're halfway in and we're, we're, you know, so if there's, you guys have money, we'd love some.
Thank you so much. Also, if we could kindly, um, go back a few slides, it was in the old photo of the, um, Ali'i Olani Hale.
The beginning one.
Yeah, it was, yeah, right there. Yes. So I noticed behind the building how close the water is. So compared to where we are today, and, um, is it through the dredging or something that we?
It's all landfill.
Ah.
And so during the overthrow, uh, the naval ships that were aiming their guns at the palace were docked much closer than they could have been today. So all of that land, because I, from there, there's several more blocks till you get to the water. Um, it's all landfill today. Perspective is kind of cool, though, yeah? To just see how different Honolulu looked back then as it does today. And these are the things that the archives and the Judiciary History Center can bring this history to life and help us better grasp and understand where we came from, so we can better know where we're going. Ikavamamua, kavamahope.
Mahalo, thank you so much.
Mahalo. And, um, what trustee Alapa had touched on, that display that was showed to us, I'm always fascinated by that because you can see the structures that used to be there in yesteryear, as well as how-
The diorama.
Yes.
Yeah, it's got the, it's got downtown Honolulu, where you can see everything. Yep.
And I, one of my favorite parts in seeing that is seeing what trustee Alapa had mentioned was how high the water went up to, um, to the grounds up until Queen Street, Fort Street area.
Queen.
And what a difference that was in the landscape at that time. Amazing. Uh, trustee Akina?
Well, Kainoa and Matt, I just want to say mahalo.
Thank you.
We appreciate your efforts to preserve history for the future. Great work.
Our pleasure. Mahalo.
Mahalo. And I, I want to say that one of the things that we learned, the theme that we learned today is the kokua that is needed in the digitizing of archives and the mea that is so important to the history of our, our, our people and our culture. So mahalo for all that you, you all do. Mahalo, Anui. We are now moving on to our next agenda item, which is, uh, community concerns and celebrations. Le, um, lehua, um, before we have any, uh, testifiers come up, I first wanted to, uh, call upon, uh, one of the government officials here this evening, Rep. Della Albaladi, to, um, give an update on some of the, uh, work from her office. Mahalo.
Sorry, I'm so short. Aloha. Um, I, I was given five minutes. I want to mahalo, um, trustee Akaka for doing that. I will not take up the full five minutes because I really want to actually hear from community here. Um, I just want to make three quick points. First of all, um, we start with history and archives, but what I love about this presentation and this opportunity is that history is all around us. And, and the archives and the judiciary, Judiciary History Center actually really connects community together. In the last year, I've been able to be at the Judiciary History Center, uh, in the, in the Supreme Court, where they've had presentations, video presentations for History Day, where I heard students talking in Olelo Hawaii, in Hawaii, Hawaiian language, and, and sharing the stories. And so what we see in these buildings are not just the past, but people talking about the present and what it means to us today. So I really want to commend you for taking the time out to, to learn about these, um, important, um, institutions because they are what keep, um, I think what makes Hawaii really special. And I, in my early career, I had the opportunity to work, uh, in the, uh, Supreme Court Building in, uh, Ali'i Olani, uh, Ali'i Olani Hale, and it's, it's a living building. Laws get, laws get interpreted there every day. And so that kind of rich history is just so amazing, and I appreciate that you folks are taking the time to do that. Secondly, I want to just say mahalo for doing this. I think in my twenty years, and I apologize if there had been community meetings like this in the past, but I've never actually really seen this. So I really appreciate that you folks are coming out into community and opening the space for, for leaders, um, because I think it's important that we have civic engagement. On that note, what I like to say is that one of the things that we're doing at the state legislature is that we are gearing up for the 2026 legislative session. So opening day is going to be Wednesday, January twenty-first. There's a lot on the agenda. As you folks have, uh, reviewed and reported on, on, um, the kinds of funds that we had to come up with, both, um, your offices, but also the legislature, um, you know, that kind of monitoring of what's happening at the federal level is going to persist as we move into January, February, and March. We know that there might be another bu, a budget crisis, so we're all monitoring that because we don't know what the federal government is going to do. And what I really appreciate about what's happening with government today is that everyone is standing ready to work together. Um, to have Oha to come to the forefront and help with, um, of funding was, was incredibly necessary, and we did that on the same side on the state legislature. And the third thing I want to end with is, I'm just so appreciative to the community who's here, because as I look out to this side of the room, I know that, um, the homestead that lives in my district, Papo Kolea, is well-represented. I'm so excited for the grassroots leadership that happens through PCDC, through the Firewise communities, uh, through, through all of the leaders in our homestead community. So I'm really excited, and I'm gonna stop there because I'm gonna turn my time over to them. Mahalo.
Mahalo, representatives. All right, we have a number of testifiers that have signed up, and the first one being Meahia Lahila Kelling of Ke'kula O Samuel M. Kamakau. Mahalo.
Aloha. Thank you for joining us.
Kamai, we were trying to make the ko'ola poko one, but we have a parent event at night, so we are here, Papo Kolea, aloha mai kako, no, aloha mai kako. Closer, okay. Aloha mai kako, inalala, okapapalaka i Oha. Um, ovauna o Meahila Hila Kelling, ke'kahu ma Ke'kula O Samuel Manai Kalani Kamakau. I'm the director, Meahila Hila Kelling, Director at Ke'kula O Samuel Manai Kalani Kamakau. Um, I did prepare something so I can keep on time. That, the clock kind of scares me. I'm gonna freeze this a little bit. Um, we're here, first of all, to mahalo, mahalo, all of you for your continued support of the Hawaiian Focus Charter Schools, and to share how your investment in us has impacted our school community and beyond. Ke'kula Samuel Manai Kalani Kamakau is a pre-K to Grade Twelve Hawaiian Medium School, um, founded in June two thousand to perpetuate the Hawaiian language and culture for generations to come. For twenty-five years, we have provided culturally-grounded, academically rigorous education rooted in Hawaiian language, culture, and identity. Uh, we are located in Haiku, He'e'i'a Ko'ola Poko Oahu, and serve one hundred fifty-four alohaaina who will be makau to assume various leadership roles in their communities as they graduate from our program. Oha has, had been a steadfast supporter of Hawaiian education, and your continued investment in our, both our individual school and our broader alliance on the Leina'aua schools, uh, is indispensable. Your support not only affirms the importance of our work, it makes it possible. As you may be aware, charter schools receive zero facilities funding from the state, state of Hawaii. Um, and therefore, your per pupil support and facilities funding over these past years have allowed us to stabilize our operations, retain qualified kumu, uh, and build strong community partnerships to amplify our collective success. I specifically want to share several of our programs that have had a huge impact on our students, which we're hopeful that will have positive long-term effects on our communities. First of all, Kamakau remains the only elementary and middle school from Hawaii to participate in the Montessori Model United Nations in New York City. This will be our fourth year participating this spring, two thousand twenty-six. In fact, our very own kumu, Kai Po'i Kelling, is contributing to develop the first convening of the United Nations Permanent Forum on Indigenous Issues as, as its own committee at the forum of sixth to eighth graders, a goal that we've had since the first year of our participation. Our students are currently learning the pos, the positions and perspectives of other indigenous peoples around the world, while based on the foundational knowledge of Ike kupuna Hawaii. Secondly, in collaboration with Malama Honua Public Charter School, Winward Community College Math Instructors, Kamakau alumni completing his PhD in Marine Science, and in partnership with- and in partnership with Winward Community College, oh, and ANSEP, Alaska Native Science and Engineering Program. We implemented our first Career Exploration Summer Program focused on marine science for our middle school students this past summer. Kamakau and Malama Honua students spent an entire week collecting water samples from Moka to Makai in He'eia, conducted research at the Hawaii Institute of Marine Biology on Moku'olo'e and culminated their experience by contributing to a youth declaration of their commitments and advocacy efforts needed to malama the Kai and sea life within. A couple of examples that I pulled from their statements, which focus on their concerns. Remembering these are 12 to 14-year-olds. The first one, we oppose golf courses over using resources from He'eia because water isn't an infinite resource and should flow naturally from to local ea that feed communities. And in parentheses, they had to add, "You don't need 1 billion gallons of water for golf courses or water parks." A second example from their youth declaration, "We advocate for community-based management of fisheries for all communities to self-determine rules to ensure the longevity of marine life for future generations." And my last example of, one of our stories is really a strong partnership with Winward Community College has boosted the results of our college program. Many of our students have, since the class of 2019 cohort, have successfully graduated with their associate's degree prior to graduating from high school. In fact, 60% of this current graduating class 2026 will be graduating with two associates each, while the other remaining 40% of them will be graduating with a certificate in Hawaiian Studies from Winward Community College. These stories highlight what can be achieved when community-based schools have the funding and staffing we need to serve students well. So on behalf of Ke'kula Kamakau, really mahalo anui oko alpaka hiapau for your continued support of our Hawaiian Focus Charter Schools and of Ke'kula Kamakau. Mahalo.
Mahalo anui. Mahalo for making it to this suite, ana. Mahalo. The next testifier we have is Kameha Ililani Vayao of Ke'kula O Samuel M. Kamakau.
See how we did that? All right, ready, go. Aloha kako. My name is Kameha Ililani Vayao. And yes, I am the hope, kahu, or the principal at Ke'kula O Samuel Manai Kalanika Makau, which is located in Haiku. However, He'ku'opau no Papukolea. Aloha kako ena hua. Yeah, 517 Cross Street. Aloha kako. I'm just here to expound a little bit more because we realized five minutes was enough. So if we both come and we each do five minutes, we can share some more manao. Akama'i ya? That's how you play the game, kako. Noli la. We just wanted to share a little bit more manao about some of the awesome stuff that our homana are doing at Kamakau. As our director explained, we are 25 years old. We were established in January of 2000. We, this is our 25th year right now. In those 25 years, we have, we can celebrate and honor with 100% graduation rate, 100% college acceptance rate. That doesn't mean all the kids choose to go. Yeah, so just so we clear, yeah, how the data work out, yeah? More recently, and this is mahalo anui for the efforts from you guys, oha, and your continued kakao'o, we've also been really blessed. We are four years into our ho'iva'a team at Kamakau. And we are one of very few kayapuni schools who have our own team. Most kayapuni schools compete with their fellow DOE school in their community. Kamakau hosts our own team. All of our practices are in Ola'ohawai'i. We do different kilo and ho'omakoko and kela'ano kuleana. And we partnered with a community team, Keihia Kahoi, as well as Huilana Kila, for our practice space and then for our va'a space over at Keihia Lagoon. And we are the current, two-time, yeah, this is our second makahiki, yeah? Second makahiki JV girls champions, which is really hoi hoi. We're only four years old in that sport, right? And then due to homana and ohana push, we also established our own He'tenalu team. And so the He'tenalu team is three years old. Again, we are reigning champions. It's a little bit different though because it's under, it's as a club, yeah? Because for many years, all of these years, in fact, this is very recently, only just became approved as a recognized official DOE sport under the OIA. And so now we'll be able to, a lot of our homana were instrumental in working with their friends, their surf friends from Iolani. And then working with Senator Kioho Kalole and with city council member, S. Kiaaina to help us kind of push forward and learn the process and continue our process with creating testimony to show our support for this sport to become an official recognized sport by the state of Hawaii at the high school level. One of the reasons this is important is because our students cannot qualify to accept scholarships, to participate, and join college-level surfing teams if the state does not recognize, if the OIA does not recognize surfing as an official sport. And all of these years, we were just a club. And so that's a celebration that Kamakau contributed to in various ways. And we're excited to kind of toot our own horn, but also to invite other schools and other kayapuni, especially to look at the different ku'una sports, the different traditional sports of our people, and use those as opportunities to grow our understanding of kilo, grow our opportunities to participate in ocean sports because we know ocean is both healing, yeah? And also good fun. And then as well as opportunity to learn how to testify and show your support and advocate for the things that you feel will support your kula and support your homana and all the different ways that our homana really pushed us, right? Because we were super nervous. And for many, many years, we said, "Oh, no." Mostly for insurance purposes, yeah? Because, you know, water sports, expensive, the insurance. But the things you learn when you open up your na'o and you start to listen to your opio and they are provided with opportunities modeled by you guys, how to testify and how to advocate for what we think is important for their own growth. So mahalo anui for letting me share. Aloha.
Mahalo. I also wanted to note too, I was going back in my mind when we had one of our past investitures, one of your homana spoke so eloquently that day. And it was such a testament to the amazing, amazing hana you folks.
Yeah, he was a Kili'i Wickman. Yeah, he was like a little first grader, I think, at that time. And now he's sixth grade. Yes, yes, mahalo.
Mahalo. Our next testifier that we have signed up is Kahhi Amsterdam.
Ahii ahii ya'oko no. Aloha. Since we're here to share community interests and celebrate because it's melikilikimaka, ha'oli makahiki ho, hak sameach, hanaka sameach, and Happy New Year. Why don't we say, "It's the most wonderful time of the year. It's the happiest season of all," isn't it? Well, I'm here to represent the interim government of the Hawaiian Kingdom, the Imamaloa Foundation and Trust, myself as a kanaka ma'oli at this wonderful time. Also, my dear mother, Leilani Hi'a'a, kaluhio kalani kalakau'e'u. She was active during the time of Ke'kuni Blaisdell, also Haunani Trask, and also Chief Justice Richardson. With the programs that have been announced, someone once said, "In order to be successful in community involvement, participation." And so this would go for our judiciary, judiciary history, our archives, even with our trusts of the oha. This would be, I thought I would share this. Someone once said that in order to be able to have participation and success, you must do three things. So I thought I would share these three things at this time. Unfortunately, I don't know who said it and I forgot what those three things are. But in any event, one of the main things I wanted to stress is in the negotiations with the military, I would encourage our trustees to participate. It's good that you're in there participating. We need our participation. We need your participation. And also, I would encourage not to hurry it through. China, China as an invader was used in the undermining of our queen, Lil'i, Queen Lil'i O'Kalani. And it's used today too. China is a major factor why the military has to have training equipment and use all this land, 3,000 acres for a dollar. So the same factor, the same reason was used back then as it's used now. So since we know that, we can be wise and not be naive about what's going on. And these lands are not ceded lands. These lands are crown lands. And so you're defending our right as kanaka ma'oli in order to utilize, maintain, preserve our lands, our aina. Best wishes in doing so. Prayers with you. And the best is yet to come. Since we are Hawaiian House of Israel Jews, I'd like to close with a prayer in Hebrew. May the Lord's blessings be with us. May His face shine upon us. May He favor us and may He give us peace and continued success. And do so in the name of our Messiah, Yeshua, Jesus, as we prepare for His coming. Amen.
Next up, we have Auntie Puni. And I'm so thankful Auntie Puni is here representing our Papukolea homestead. And it looks here also, kula no na po'e Hawaii.
Aloha, aloha mai. My name is Kahileka Apuni Ke'kau oha. And everybody calls me Puni. I'm born and raised in Papukolea all my life. Today, I am a Hawaiian homestead lese at 745 Eelkeia Street, right below you. And I'm here, I have the honor of presenting our report and extending our gratefulness, our sincere mahalo to the Office of Hawaiian Affairs for supporting kula no na po'e Hawaii and our efforts to take care of our kupuna. In June of 2025, we received a grant from oha in the category of physical health of oha, olakino. And so I'm here to share with you this program. So the Papukolea Kupuna Community Care Network, also known at home as KC CN, right? The old radio station. KC CN was created in 2017 by kula to take care of our kupuna, to provide them, you know, cultural classes, education, a time for them to gather and, you know, have social gathering and be able to take care of them. Over the course of time, this program has just exploded. Today, the program that you are supporting is taking care of nearly 300 kupuna over the age of 50 years old in Papukolea Ke'valo and Kalavahine. So I really want to say mahalo. Our goal is to expand this program out. And at the end of time, we're planning to have an increase of 66% of the kupuna being served. So what has happened, everybody, is that the program has grown so much. We have Papukolea kupuna, but we also have our native Hawaiian kupuna who live in Honolulu, Broad, all the way out to Eva and Kapole and down to Ammanalo. So they're coming from all over. The program is held Tuesday and Thursday mornings from 9:00 in the morning to 11:00. I was laughing with trustee Galiteria because when kupuna makamai closed in Kaka'ako, all the kupuna from kupuna makamai is up in Papukolea. So we are exploding at 2150 Tanis Drive, but it's all a good thing. I'm here to share with you, you know, the project is to expand KC CN. In that expansion, part of this grant is helping to support a series of community conversations to ask kupuna and their caregivers and families, "Let's start talking about what do we need to do or plan for you kupuna to age safely in place in a kupuna supportive living center on Pu'auwaina." In January of 2025, kula launched Pilina Pu'auwaina. And I would like to introduce it. So this started in 2025, January, and you have come to Kokua and support this program in June. So, are we ready, ladies? Okay, so here we go. And then I'll wrap it up and bring us up to date. Mahalo.
Hawaiian community can effectively be a- Kula no na po'e Hawaii was established in 1992 by concerned Papukolea kupuna to strengthen relationships between parents and the school system. Today, kula serves more than 1,000 annually in its programs, believing that the wellness of our native Hawaiian community can effectively be achieved when healthcare is community-driven, working directly with others. The kula crew is an exceptional team of committed individuals assembled to serve our community across various sectors, including health and education. With 65% of our team being native Hawaiians, born and raised in Papukolea, we value the relationships we built with community members, from keki to kupuna, and the partnerships formed with our schools, universities, community organizations, government agencies, and elected officials. Today, we invite you to join us as we embark on our Pilina Pu'auwaina journey. Kula stands at the threshold of acquiring a long-term land disposition from the Department of Hawaiian Homeland for 7.25 acres of land nestled on the east-facing slopes of Pu'auwaina. Kula intends to gather essential information to support one of the top two priority projects identified in the Papukolea Regional Plan from 2009 and reaffirmed in 2020. The kupuna supportive living center is envisioned as a kauhale, or village for kupuna to age safely in the community. It is kula's honor to support Papukolea in this community-identified priority project. For over 20 years, kula has partnered with Hawaii universities on community-based participatory research and service learning initiatives, addressing community needs while promoting healthy living. This collaboration has transformed the health of our community members through culturally relevant programs focused on enabling kupuna to age safely in place. Our research has revealed the many challenges faced by our kupuna and taught us that solutions often emerge from the rich experiences within our community. With the support of the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation, the Pilina Pu'auwaina journey spans over the next two years to conduct 24 community conversations. We have assembled the project facilitation team, including kula, the Department of Hawaiian Homeland, Group 70, Dr. Claire Townsend-Ing of the UH Japsom Department of Native Hawaiian Health, Hat Bed, and Brooke Dolan. Our intent is to uncover the unique health and social needs of our people in planning for the Pu'auwaina site development. These dialogues are more than just information gathering. They are a powerful way of co-creating our future together. We eagerly anticipate sharing space and hosting talk story sessions that engage community residents- residents, key stakeholders, and the wider community affected by this project. Through these meaningful interactions, we will learn from one another and collaboratively pursue the funding necessary to build the infrastructure that our community deserves. This project is for our community. Nokako, nakako. For Papakolea, by Papakolea. We invite you on this journey to Pilina Pu'auwaina.
Mahalo. It's been a wonderful year. This, like I mentioned, this video came out. We launched this project in January, invited 250 community residents, their caregivers, our partners, and our elected officials. And we have conducted nine community conversations in subjects such as history and culture of Pu'auwaina, what, you know, health and aging, safely aging in place, research, site planning and design, policy. We know that there's going to need to be some policy changes at the department with this development. And then last but not least, fund development. So, we have conducted these meetings and it's been awesome. And so, what's going to happen now, in July of 2025, July 5th, Kula has been awarded or presented, given a temporary right-of-entry permit from the Department of Hawaiian Homelands to begin due diligence. So, we have site control. We have site control of 7.25 acres of land. So, as of January 2026, we will have contractors, G70, all the surveyors will be out on the property, conducting all the necessary required due diligence required by the state to meet HRS 343. So, we are on our way. We're doing master planning, business, and all of that. We will continue to have community conversations. And, you know, I'm going to share with you, our ike is to create a native Hawaiian campus to take care of our kupuna on this property, which is just not building apartments. It's what we are asking kupuna, okay kupuna, what do you, what do you want in order to be safe? Because what we're doing is, just for clarity, this project is not for the waitlist. This project is targeted for Papakolea kupuna who have an issue walking up and down 30-plus stairs. Right, brother? Okay. What we're addressing is an environmental issue. So, this project, as identified for Papakolea, is for Papakolea. Okay, I told Kali, we're kind of going back and forth, but I love him, but it's for Papakolea. Okay, so that's why, nokako, nakako. We are endeavoring to complete an indigenous campus, and kupuna are asking for a medical clinic. They want adult daycare, they want transportation, you know, they want a food kitchen, they want a community center like the one we have in Papakolea. So, it's a living supportive site. Now, what we're also being asked to do, and I'll be real transparent, because Papakolea is very busy and have been 20 years in the making in community-based participatory research on all islands, we have been asked by the Department of Hawaiian Homelands to consider building a native Hawaiian, first time, native Hawaiian homestead research institute on property to support kupuna and their families. So, we are, that's on the board. That's, that's the dream. So, this, this 7.25 acres of land has to be designed in a manner that is pono for our community and our kupuna and keeps them safe. So, it's all about having them stay home, not move away, not go someplace else or care for them, but keep them home, but make them safe. Okay? So, I wanted to say mahalo, Oha. Thank you so much for all your support and we'll talk story and we'll keep you updated as we move along.
Mahalo, Auntie Puni, mahalo. You know, having both you and Rep. Della Albaladi in the room, it reminds me of when I used to work at the state legislature. I remember getting to know you more at a meeting in Della's office. That was over 15 years ago. And it's so nice to see how, how much has happened for the Papakolea community since those conversations were had. So, mahalo Anui for sharing on this and all your diligent work representing Papakolea. Mahalo. Next up is Richard Chan of Naleo Papakolea.
Good evening, everyone. Aloha. Thank you, Oha Trustee Board, for allowing us this opportunity, or myself this opportunity, to reintroduce myself as the president of Naleo Papakolea. For those of you that might not know, this is, it's been two years since I first came and introduced myself as the president, the new president of our community association. I come here with not bringing any concerns, but more of a celebration-type deal. The education that I've gained, for instance, we cannot move forward without wonderful politicians, representatives that are willing to support us and guide us in every effort that we try to attain in our community. I also learned that I cannot do this by myself. I have to encourage other people in our community to engage with this. I also learned I needed patience because that just doesn't happen overnight. However, I also realized that the Lord has blessed me with a lot of people that come forth so that we can start to obtain these goals that we set before us. With that said, I don't want to take any more of our time here because there are other things that I'd like my secretary to speak on behalf because these are the more encouraging things that I've witnessed in the last two years. So, without any further ado, I'd like to introduce Noel Shaw as our secretary.
Sure. Yeah, of course.
Aloha mai kako. Hi Auntie Luana. Auntie Luana is my next-door neighbor. I grew up playing in the road and with her keke. And I'm honored to stand in front of you all today as a member of Naleo Papakolea. I came into Naleo Papakolea as someone who was concerned about fire safety in our community after we had a fire in 2024. A firework ignited fire. And I was like, you know what, I got to go where the people are because we're not going to be able to do this alone. So, I went to Uncle Ricky and the community came together. So, I do want to offer up this suggestion, the next time you come to Papakolea, I do suggest that you meet at Stevenson Middle School. Ko'ala Nakoa is great, but Stevenson is walking distance and everyone is used to meeting there. That's where Rep. Della Baladi has her halawa. I do like this setup, though. It doesn't feel like we're distant, so I want to applaud you for that. At Naleo Papakolea, I serve as the secretary and, you know, our goal is to consistently host people coming together to talk about issues in community. We haven't gotten to all the formalities of our bylaws and things like that because what we're doing is actually addressing issues as they're coming up in community. And the fire-wise organizing that we've done in community has been one of those things. So, in this past year of loan, we've had three cleanups. We did one community garage sale. We did two fundraisers and we have our big December event. That's an emergency preparedness event that we call in all the homesteaders for. That's on December 20th. And we did put a request in to Oha to have a table because we want to talk about, you know, what kind of offerings Oha has for emergency preparedness for native Hawaiians. What we're learning in this work as we're walking around our community and really studying it from the eye of like fire preparedness and emergency preparedness, we're not ready. There are only one way in and out of some parts of our community. And, you know, we know that developmentally, it was a difficult place to develop on in the first place, but we also know that we can make ourselves strong to be prepared for those conversations and to prepare for that work. So, those are why we have those workdays. And we know we have a lot of community members who are doing massive restoration work that we can imagine our ahupua', our ili, our homestead, being one of those places that's food sovereign as well. So, we have a community gleaning project that we started up and it's really just like a sheet of like, here's all the food trees throughout the homestead and how do we have food sufficiency right here at home? Which kind of brings me to these other points. I'm also a member of Hu'eloh'a Aina and I really appreciate the way that Oha is attacking the lease conversation. And I need them to stay vigilant on that because when they're not, I have to move out of my community and go into this lease work. Because the aina and the water and all of the things are threatened and the public trust and the crown lands that are supposed to be there to support the work of Hawaiian people isn't there, I cannot do what I do at home. Like, it's turbulent. I was one of the people who was a huge advocate for shutdown Red Hill when this person right here was a month old. I was at the die-in and I advocated through that whole thing. And if you want to talk about mental health trauma and what that exposed me to, imagine some of the folks that were on the Mauna and did that, too. So, it's really important and I really appreciate you guys putting in effort to teach the community about that, but also take the reins because we need that malu, we need that safety net that, yeah, they got them and they're telling the truth and they know. Which brings me to my last point regarding current water issues in Oahu. We're currently asked to decrease our use by 20% by Ernie Lau. And this is concerning to me because if I'm thinking about restoration projects, because we know that for wildfires to not exist, if we steward our aina and we grow it, it requires water. But if there's a 20% water decrease ask, how am I supposed to water the plants every day? So, I looked up who's the biggest water users in Oahu. Number one is the Marine Corps Base. So, when we talk about the lease issue, it might be reserved just to 30,000 acres across Pai Aina, but it's a bigger conversation about what kind of neighbors the military is to us and what they stop us from doing and dreaming up because we have to think about water left, you know? And I think about this a lot. And it really concerns me to, to be in a space that's so celebratory and at the end of the day, we could not have water in the middle of the ocean. Yeah, that's crazy. So, please be vigilant on that issue. Please know there are people in community who are trying to do the things, but it's hard to see far when right now, someone's going to take some more. We've had a lot of things taken from us already, lava, inaf. Okay, mahalo Anui.
Mahalo Noel.
And if somebody could come to the 20th, that would be super great. We really would love to hear about the emergency preparedness and grants that are offered, like if someone's home burns or even the food offerings that are offered because snaps being taken away, those kinds of things on the table would be sufficient. But I can resend the email.
Noel, can you touch on the date, time, location, and the purpose of the meeting as well?
Yeah, so it is December 20th, Saturday. It's going to be from 8:30 till 1:30. The purpose of the meeting is to gather our homestead communities in Kalavahine, Ke'ualoa, and Papakolea to talk about emergency preparedness. And so, during that time, we bring in, of course, fire. This year, we're trying to get EMT and police in because one of the conversations we have to have in homesteads, we have no room to go in and out when some of these emergency vehicles are coming in because we have too many cars. So, so it's a hard conversation, right? We have hard conversations in our community a lot of times and this is one that we're going to have because we also have a sewer project coming in. So, our goal is to have the conversation internally in community. So, it's not for like the bigger native Hawaiian community, it's really for the neighborhood. And our goal is to get Office of Hawaiian Affairs who come to also share with community members who need their houses restructured, need support in maybe just making it day by day. Kula is a survivalist organization. Like, without them existing in our homestead, some people would go without. Some people would be extremely struggling on a daily basis basis. So, you know, the more exposure to resources, the more commitment of time, the more that we know that the malu of Office of Hawaiian Affairs exists, the better we are able to do our, just be good neighbors to each other. Mahalo. I hope that was helpful.
Mahalo. Thank you so much. Uncle Richard, is there anything more that you wanted to touch on? That's all? Okay, mahalo. And Noel, I also wanted to share as well, mahalo for your recommendation on Stevenson. I wanted to share with you, eh, my team and I have been working on this for how many months, calling all of the schools over here and they have after-school programs and the timing it takes to set everything up and everything. So, if you have any other recommendations, we are open ears for that. And we've asked Auntie Puni, too, because the community center no ma inaf parking. So, it's all the, all those factors that we work into, but if you have any suggestions, please let us know. We're open to it. Mahalo. Mahalo. Are there any other community members that would like to testify this evening that are not signed up but would like to come and share?
Can I share something?
Yes, please, trustee Huanar.
You know, some of the comments made by the people of Papakolea really, I wanted to share something because my, my mom just recently passed. She's from Papakolea. What makes it difficult, you guys, is they live on, like on cliff, so you got to go up and down steps. Now, imagine, there's no parking. So, imagine if you're handicapped or you have a hard time moving around, how you get out of your car? You get bang, you open your door when the car's coming down. So, it's so difficult. So, I see how important the kupuna is to Papakolea. And I, I, I just feel that, that whole community can get around our kupuna. I think we're going to strive ahead. And this young lady over here talked about Kalawahine and exit points. You only get one entry into that place and if there's a fire on the bottom, you know, they're going to have to go to Puni's house or something, especially your hard work for a long period of time, Puni. Thank you so much.
Mahalo. Members, any other manao? You wanted trustee Akina?
Mahalo. I also wanted to say mahalo to all of you for coming. Just wonderful manao this evening. I want to reflect what trustee has just shared, that the sense of community that you've shown in caring for your kupuna is amazing. It's exactly what needs to be done. The description of the kupuna campus is a true living kauhale in which each hale, each activity is brought together to benefit the people there. Mahalo for being a model for everyone. I'm very inspired being here tonight. Aloha.
Mahalo. Looks like we have another testifier. If you could please introduce yourself with your name and if there's an organization you're with that you'd like to state?
I just have a question. But I'll introduce myself, Kaliko Chan Bellina E'ka'aha. I, my question is, this past week, announced on the morning news that Oha had transferred to or conveyed to DLNR some 900-plus acres of land at the foothill of Ko'ala, filled with archaeological sites and, of course, the watershed. My question is, why did that transfer take or conveyance take place?
We, we did not approve anything of that sort. And I also wanted to share, Kalamai, the way in which community concerns and celebrations goes, it's opportunity for our community or beneficiaries to testify and those that have all of our beneficiaries. And it's not a back-and-forth Q and A, but you can have up to five minutes to share.
I just want to add that the news article, which was announced on the morning news, mentioned, and I would think that it is filled with archaeological and historic sites. So, my question is, DLNR is, you know, given to open up lands for hiking and whatnot. You can go up to Nu'u'anu and see the forest reserve, which is heavily used by visitors for hiking and also find the historic site from Kamehemeha III that has been damaged. And so, since visitors in the past have not been kind to our historic sites, I wonder why something as sensitive at the foothills of the Ko'ala would be conveyed. I, I just wanted to say that I would be concerned. That's my testimony.
Well, thank you for your information. I think we should get some.
Yes, thank you. So, with that, I'm going to have my team speak with you to get more information. I would, I would say, rather, it's not so much for the Office of Hawaiian Affairs to convey land over to the Department of Land and Natural Resources, however, it's the other way around. So, it's conveying our crown and government lands of our Hawaiian Kingdom back to the Office of Hawaiian Affairs, AKA our